So a homeowner has a straight term mortgage with an interest rate of 6.5%. The monthly payment is $575. The property has an 80% loan to value ratio. What is the market value of the home? Now, there's a couple of key points in this question. This is a very typical math problem you could see. By the way, I know we've got a couple of new folks that are on here. So don't freak out tonight just because we're going over some math. This is good for you just to sit back and watch, okay? And I talk about a T problem that we have. And I don't know, let's see. If I can draw right up here, I'm gonna try this. There we go. So we talk about a T problem that we have. And with the T problem, let's erase this. With the T problem, I want you to know that you're always going to have two of your variables and you're going to be solving for one. Now, we know that on top is what we call part. Here is the percent or the rate. And over here is the total. Okay? So when we look at this question, a homeowner has a straight term mortgage. Now, there's something you need to understand and hopefully you remembered from financing. A straight term mortgage is interest only. Okay? So the monthly payment is $575. The first thing, and right here, they tell us the interest rate 6.5%. Now, in order to solve this, so in looking at this problem, we know that we have an 80% in the problem and we have a 6.5%. And so we're probably thinking, where do I start? What percentage goes where? The first thing we need to do in this problem is convert everything to an annual number. Okay? So we are told the monthly, right there, the monthly payment is $575. See that? So we need to take $575 and multiply it times 12. So let me get my calculator here. If you have yours, so $575 times 12 equals $6,900. Now, what is $6,900? Well, what's the $575? That's the monthly payment, right? So if this is the monthly payment, this would have to be the annual payment or the annual interest. Now, why do I say interest? Because it's a straight term mortgage, okay? It's a straight term mortgage. So let me get, so right there. And a straight term mortgage tells us that it's interest only. There's no reduction of the principal amount. So when we do $575, which is the monthly interest, times 12 months, this gives us the annual interest. Now, we can take this number and work this into the T problem. Okay? For some reason, my line was leaving there. So does the $6,900 go on top or bottom? Well, let's look at the problem again. A homeowner has a straight term mortgage with interest of 6.5%. The monthly payment is $575. We figured out the annual interest. Now, the property has an 80% LTV ratio. That stands for loan to value ratio. What is the market value of the home? Well, if we know what the interest is, the annual interest, and we know what the loan to value ratio is, well, we can put the .80 here now. Notice that's 80%, but we always move our decimal point over two places. So .80 is what, we got that. The question is, now, where do we put the $6,900? Does it go on top or does it go on bottom? Well, remember, this is part, and I always tell you that this is the little guy, the little number, the smaller number. And total is the bigger number. So ask yourself the question. Is the market value of the home, that's what we're solving for, is it going to be smaller or bigger than the annual interest? Well, naturally, it's gonna be a bigger number. So all we have to do here is put the $6,900 on top. And our math symbols are always multiply or divide. So if we have one of the top and one of the bottom, what does our math tell us to do? Divide. So we take $6,900. You always put this in your calculator first, then press the divide button, then put in .80, and that will equal $132,692.31. So there's the same process we did. We took the monthly interest times 12 to get annual interest. We divided that by .065 to get the loan amount. I think I missed that step, didn't I? I sure did. I'm glad I did that. The, and then we take the loan amount divided by .80. So I'm going to erase that. I missed a problem. I missed a step. And I would have gotten that wrong, see? Because that would have been one of the choices. What I need to do is be on a different page where I have more. So my bad. We'll follow this along here. You're probably thinking, well, I'm glad John missed a question there. Okay. So where I'm, the step I missed was the second one right here. Because once we have the annual interest, we have to get the loan amount. So it's two T problems. So that was my fault because we have $6,900 annual interest and the interest rate was .065, which is the same as 6.5%. I missed that step right there. And so what does our math tell us to do? Tells us to divide because we're solving for this number. And that's when we get the 106, 153, and 85 cents. Now, we work a second T problem, okay? Now, we work the second T problem. And here's where we plug the .80 because remember, it's an 80% loan to value ratio. I like to put my math symbols on. And now, do we know the loan amount? And we're solving for the market value of the home, right? So the market value of the home is gonna be bigger than the loan amount. So we just plug the 106, and we divide by .80, and we get 132. So what I'm going to do here, let's see. I think that'll work all right. Bring this over here. Okay. So my apologies. I won't be able to use that one in the course material. I'm doing some of these in my studio downstairs, so. Okay. So any questions there? What I want to know is, did someone catch that while I was making that horrible mistake? Well, if you did, good, and I apologize. I just need to pull one thing up here, so just one second. And I'm gonna make, if you don't mind, because I'm using a different microphone. So I'm gonna just make a really quick switch on my microphone. So just one second here. Okay, so hopefully you can hear me okay. This, normally I use this microphone because it's a headset. I was using a different microphone, but with this headset, I have a little more freedom to move around when I'm drawing. And I think this will help a little bit better. So I want to pull up a real quick thing here. Okay, so here we go. So this next one, let's just kind of go over this. Hopefully, everybody can hear me okay, and there's no problem. Let me just check the audio. Okay, so hopefully you can hear me okay. And everything sounds good. So let's go over this problem. A closing takes place on the 15th of the month. At closing, the seller pays off his mortgage. In addition, he pays for the title search, the termite inspection, the buyer closing cost, and a home warranty plan. How would the interest for the seller's loan appear on the closing statement? So here's what they're asking us. How would the interest on the seller's loan appear on the closing statement? That's what they want us to answer right there. Well, the interest is for the seller's loan appears. So we're really not worried about the buyer's interest. So in this case, it's always going to be a debit to the seller. Now, why is it always a debit to the seller? When you have, when you make your mortgage payment, let's just say you recently made your mortgage payment on April the 1st to your bank. Okay? Today is the 3rd. So when you made your payment, you actually have two days of what we call accrued interest. Okay? Two days of accrued interest. If this is the 1st of the month, right here, so this is the 1st, and we come along here, and this is the 30th, we'll just say. Whenever you have your closing, the 16th, if your payoff was for $200,000 and you made your last payment and it showed a loan balance of $200,000, you are going to have what we call accrued interest for 16 days. So in other words, whenever you make your payment here on the 1st of May, you're really paying for the month of April. Okay? So on the settlement statement, on the closing statement, you will always have a debit for the loan amount to the seller. And you will also have a debit to the seller for any interest that's owed, okay? So if there's 16 days of interest, in this case, it was 15th, they have 16 days, or in this case, 15 days in my example, of accrued interest that will be due and that will be shown as a debit on the settlement statement. Okay? So let's go down here to this one here. So a bank makes a 75% loan on a property valued at $189,500. How much additional cash would be required if the buyer has paid $2,500 as earnest money? Now, this is a typical question that you will probably see on the real estate exam. This is a typical math question. And I'm here to tell you that the people who are not on the call tonight, although this will be in the course material, the people who are not on the call tonight will miss this question. And it's a softball. But it's very tricky, okay? So let's look at this and read it again. A bank makes a 75% loan on a property valued at $189,500. How much additional cash will be required if the buyer has paid $2,500 as earnest money? So really, the bank, if we look at this, a bank makes a 75% loan on this property. So if we did a T problem here, do we know the value of the property, $189,500? That is the value of the property. If they're making a 75% loan, let's find out how much the down payment is. Because remember, we're just looking at how much cash would be required, right? So 189,500 times .25 equals Okay? That is answer B. And the people who are not on the call tonight are going to look on the computer screen and they're gonna circle that. And they're gonna say, yes, I got one right. But read the problem because they just missed that, okay? They just missed that problem because that's incorrect. How much additional cash would be required if the buyer paid $2,500 in earnest money? So you need to subtract $2,500. And when you subtract the earnest money, because they want to know how much additional cash they will need, they only need $44,875, which is answer A. And so everybody on the call tonight got that one right. Good job. But if you weren't on the call, you went for that one right there. And I'm just telling you, I see this over and over and over again. I make the same mistakes. If you read through this too quickly, you will miss certain key words. And I tell you throughout the course, read the questions three times. I got a guy that just, last week, sent me an email and he said, I passed both parts. He took them both the same day. And he said, I passed both parts, my first attempt. Thank you, John. It was a great school. And he said, I gotta tell you, reading the questions three times made all the difference in the world for me. So you've got to read them three times. So understand what we did was, we figured out how much the down payment was, and then we subtracted their earnest money to find out how much additional cash would be required. They need $44,875. Okay, so here's the next one. I gave you a little peek at the answer, but maybe you didn't pay attention there. And hopefully, you're trying to work these with me at home. If you are, I think that's great. A buyer received a mortgage in the amount of $179,500. The buyer paid $4,487.50 in discount points. How many points had the lender charged the buyer? Now, first of all, you've got to remember, I want you to remember this. One discount point equals 1% of the loan amount. Remember, we always calculate discount points and origination fees on the loan amount. Don't forget that. A discount point is prepaid interest. You might see that on the test. It increases the lender's yield. And when I say increases the lender's yield, the lender makes more money. I mean, they're just, they're making a higher interest rate than what they're telling you they're making. Well, they tell you through all this fine print, but the lender's making more money off of you. I mean, they're jabbing you for another few bucks here and there. So what has increased the lender's yield? What does that mean? If I gave you a dollar, let's say, if I gave you $100 and I charged you one discount point, you would give me a dollar back, right? So how much am I really out of pocket to you? $99. I gave you $100. I charged you one discount point, so you gave me a dollar back. Remember, one discount point is 1% of the loan amount. So you'd need a $100 bills to make a full 100%. So I give you $100. I charge you 1% discount point, prepaid interest, increases my yield, helps me make more money on the loan. You give me a dollar back. I'm only out of pocket $99. But yet, you are paying me back on a loan that is based on $100, right? My interest rate's 5% on that $100 I charged you. But I'm only out of pocket $99. But you were paying me back as though I loaned you $100. But you gave me a dollar back, which means I'm only out of pocket $99. Do you see how that increases my yield? Or it allows me as a lender to make more money, to be more profitable on the loan? So you got to remember those parts about discount points. Always remember this. They like to try to give you the sales price. And we'll see one of those here in a minute. Just remember, it's prepaid interest. The other thing I want to mention here is that if you see a loan origination fee, that's just to cover the paperwork. But that's still 1% of the loan amount. So origination fees usually cover the paperwork, the lender's paperwork and some of that. The discount point covers prepaid interest. So how do we solve this problem? This is just a simple T problem. So let's draw our T out. And remember, I'm just gonna, so we have this, so you know, we multiply the bottom two and we divide any, if we have one top and one bottom. And remember, this is part, this is total, this is percent. So in this case, they want to know how many points, percent, right, that we charge. So we're solving for that number right there. So put your smaller number on top, 4,487.50, and put the larger number, the loan amount, 179.5, down here. And so what does our math tell us to do? Our math sign tells us to divide. And John says, you always put the smaller number in your calculator first. 4,487.50 divided by 179.5 will give us .0250. And when you move your decimal place over two places, it's 2.5 or C, right there. Okay? So not a challenging question. I know I spent a lot of time on that, but I just wanted to make sure that you understood and that you were good to go with that. But this is a math question you might see, and that's a kind of a freebie. Now, they probably will throw the sales price in there to try to throw you off track. And we'll see one of those here in a minute. But good job on that. Any questions? You can raise your hand or you can type a question in the question bank. So I do not see any questions that are coming through. And everybody's still on the call, so that makes me feel good. So, okay. And my little baby girl, Lucy, is right here at the bottom of my feet, sleeping. And she's looking at me like, she's thinking, when are you gonna get off this webinar so we can go in there on the couch and you can give me a back rub? So my wife had to run to the store for a minute. So Lucy's right here at the bottom of my feet. Okay, a buyer closes on a home on June the 6th with a loan for $157,900 at 5.5% interest. The buyer's first payment is due on August 1st. What is the amount of prepaid interest the buyer will pay at closing? So a buyer closes on a home on June 6th. This is thrown at us a little different way. And here's the buyer's loan, 157.9, right here, at 5% interest. The buyer's first payment is due on August 1st. What is the amount of prepaid interest the buyer will pay at closing? So when we're closing, June the 6th. So remember, so that we're all on the same page here. Closing on June the 6th. The way this works for buyers on the closing table is, and this will be July 1st, right? And then this goes over to August 1st. Now, notice, it says, the first payments due on August 1st. Hmm, that looks odd, doesn't it? If you're closing way back here on June the 6th. Well, remember, when I said you make your, when you make your July payment, you're actually paying what? For the month of June. It's kind of like a hotel. You check in, when you check out, you settle up and pay for your bill. Same way with interest, mortgage, your mortgage payment. So if we're closing on the 6th, this, on closing, the lender normally collects what they call prepaid interest. And so the earlier in the month you close, the higher your closing cost. But your first payment's not due till August 1st. Because remember, when you make your August 1st payment, you're really paying for the month of July. So we've got to find out what the prepaid interest is from June the 6th to the end of the month. Okay? That's how we're gonna solve this problem. So let's get into this. And so I'm gonna erase my drawings here. And the first thing we want to do, okay? So the first thing we want to do is take, we want to find out what the annual interest is on this. And we can do that when we're trying to figure out how much interest is due by a T problem. So since we're solving for annual interest, I know immediately that's a top number because annual interest always goes on top. Do I know the interest rate of the loan? Yes, 5.5%. John said, hey, it's a lot easier if I just move my decimal. John said, hey, it's a lot easier if I just move my decimal place over. So let's go 1, 2. So that's .055, right? .055. Now what goes right here? That's your $157,900. What does our math tell us if we have the two bottom ones? We multiply. So let's multiply 157.9 times .055. And I got $8,684.50. What does that represent? That's my annual interest. Now we can do a shortcut here because we're closing on the 6th. So if we know the annual interest, why don't we just divide it by 360 and get our daily interest, which is $24.12. That's what we, that's our daily interest. Now I used, I'm going to put daily interest there. I use 360. If they want you to use a 365, they will tell you in the problem. But normally if you use 360, you're going to be right in the ballpark and you'll be fine. Okay, so just divide it by 360. Now we get the daily interest. Now we just have to figure out how many days are left. Well, if they close on June 6th, and I tell you what, I just count on my fingers. So the 6th, 7th, 8th, 9th, 10th, that's five days. 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, that's 10 days. 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 15 days. 21, 22, 23, 24, 25. I'm now up to what? 20 days. 26, 27, 28, 29, 30. And I would be making check marks on my paper, my scratch paper to make sure I'm counting correctly. That's 25 days. So now I know what the daily interest is. So I take $24.12 and I multiply it times 25 days. Remember our daily interest? And that gives me $603. And that is the prepaid interest the buyer will pay at closing. That's the prepaid interest the buyer will pay at closing. And that will be a debit to the buyer. It's prepaid interest. It's their interest they pay on the close, at the closing. And their payment will not be due until August the 1st. Okay, good job. Let's go to the next one. I mean, they're throwing a lot of math on the, on the, and these are the type math problems. And you know, sometimes you just have to work them and work them and work them. And you'll get the hang of it. But I want to make sure that everybody knows how to do these. And again, these are being plugged into your material. So you'll, you'll have access to watch these again. A buyer purchased a home for $215,400 and paid 15% down payment. If the lender charged three discount points, how much cash did the buyer need? Well, this is a, this is one of those that I was telling you about because they charged three discount points. But remember, discount points are always paid on the loan amount. Well, they don't give us a loan amount here. They just tell us a homeless purchase for 215.4. So let's do our first T problem. Do we know the down payment? Yes, 15%. So in this case, 200, they pay, we know the sales price. Yes, 215,400 times .15. That gives us, because we're solving for the, the down payment, that gives us $32,310. Oops, already had my dollar sign there. $32,310. Now what is that? They paid 15% down. This is their down payment, right? So let's take the loan, the, the amount they paid for the house and subtract $32,310, their down payment. And what do we get when we subtract that? We get $183,090. And this represents what? The loan amount. That's their, remember, this was what they paid for the house, 215.4. We took it times .15 to get their down payment. And then we subtracted their down payment from what they paid for the house to get the loan amount. Now we can calculate the points, can't we? So let's work another T problem. See, we had to, we had to get down to the loan amount in order to solve for the, so the loan amount we're, we're solving for, how much discount points? That's going to be the smaller number. So what's, remember part, total, percent. So the total, the bigger number is 183,090. And they paid three points. So times 3% because 1%. Uh, one discount point equals 1% of the loan amount. But John told us to move our decimal two places over. So that's .03. So now what does our math tell us to do? If we have the two bottom ones, we multiply 183,090 times .03 Looky there, that's D. Well, let's read the question. How much cash did the buyer need? Well, they need their down payment, don't they? And they need to pay for the points. So you have to add the 32,000, 32,310 and the 5,492.70. And when you add those two together, you get answer A, 37,802.70. Now, this is where students are failing the test because they're simple math problems, but they're not reading the questions carefully. I, I mean, I'm just, I'm bound and determined to know that's where people are failing the test. They're, they're taking these sucker answers, I guess you could call them sucker punches. And they're saying, oh, there it is, I got that. And they don't realize that there's, when you read the question, they're, they're not asking about the points. They're asking how much cash did they need? They need their down payment and they need their discount points. So you've really got to read the questions carefully. And if not, you're going to, you're going to just throw some real easy math problems out the door. And these are all on the state and you can only miss 10 questions on the state. So you know, there's a question, and I had, I had a student ask me this the other day. And I had this question in the material. It says, two brokers agreed to share the commission equally. And it goes through this whole big long rigmarole. And it says, what portion of the commission will the selling broker receive? And it says, what portion? Well, they tell you the commission rate's 6%. They tell you they share it equally. And so everyone wants to take 3%. I don't know why. But if they ask you what portion of the commission did the selling broker receive? If they're sharing it equally, that broker gets 50%, not 3%. But they word this in such a way that it has, you know, listing brokers receiving a 6% commission. So they're going to share the commission equally with anyone who sells it. This broker comes along, finds a buyer, they close, yada, yada, yada. What portion of the commission did the selling broker receive? And answer A is 3% and everybody wants to grab 3%. I'm telling you, when I was at the instructor's workshop in October, they put that question on the screen and I heard instructors from around the state of Missouri say 3%. Hey, and you know, some of us were sitting there saying, we've seen that question before. And the answer was 50%. What portion of the commission did they receive? So you've got to read these very carefully. You don't want to miss those. Let's take another one here. A salesperson sold a property for $229,000. The salesperson's agreement with the employing broker provides for a 75% share of the broker's commission. The broker's share of the commission in this sale is 4%. What is the salesperson's share? So the first thing we need to do is find out what was the total broker's commission, right? And so if the property sold for $229,900 and the commission is 4%, we could work our first T problem. I always like to put my math on there. Uh, this is going to be 4%. John said move that decimal over, so it's .04. Now is this going to be the bigger number or the smaller number? Well, we're trying to solve for what the broker earned or the commission. So we're solving for part or the smaller number. That's what we're looking for. So the total we've got, it's 229, 229.9. 229.9, our math tells us to multiply anytime you have the two bottoms. So we multiply 229.9 times .04 gives us $9,196. That's the total commission. Okay, now this, let's, let's take a, let's look at this again, though. That's the total commission. The salesperson's agreement with the employing broker provides for a 75% of the broker's commission. And they want to know what is the salesperson's share of the commission? We always got to find out what is it they want us to know? That's the question they want us to know right there. So it's just another T problem, isn't it? So I'm going to do another T problem. I'll just try to make room here. Do we know the percentage? Yes, it's 75%. If we move our decimal over, it's .75. Now are we solving for part or total? Well, in this case, we're trying to solve for the salesperson's share. So the salesperson's share is only 75%. So it's going to be smaller than total. So we just take this $9,600 or $9,196, put it as total. Now we're solving for part and our math tells us to multiply again. So 1, 9,196 times .75 tells us that the agent received $6,897. And that would be C. Hey, I, I'll take a commission check like that today, wouldn't you? So 6,897. I want you to see something here. And I talked to one of my students, a girl, and she passed this week. It was, she did have to go back for an additional attempt. I think it was her, she passed the state on the first time. She did not pass the national. She did not pass the national the second time. And then I spent about an hour on the phone with her, helping her. And she passed the next day. We went over a lot of things, but she was doing the same exact thing my daughter was doing. And Annie said the same thing. Annie said, you know, dad, I'm only working those math problems, one T problem deep. And I'm seeing an answer and I think that's the answer. And she said, I think I've got to work a minimum of two T problems to get the answer. And I said, Annie, you have to. And Nikki, that I worked with up in the Kansas City area, we talked by phone for about an hour, like I said. And Nikki was also, she said, John, I'm only working one T problem and I'm seeing an answer. And I'm thinking I've gotten, I'm done with it. And I said, Nikki, they're always going to make you go two, three T problems deep. And this is a prime example of how you have to work one T problem, get an answer, and then plug that answer into the second T problem. But notice they give you that answer down here. They'll do that to you, to throw you off base. And so when Annie realized she had to go two T problems deep, she passed the test. And when Nikki did that this last week, she passed the test. Now, um, keep that in mind. I was going to mention something else that you could do here, but I don't think I want to then. Okay, let's do one more and then we'll call it a night because gosh, we're at eight o'clock already. So, okay. Maybe we'll do two more if this is a short one. The monthly interest on a straight loan. Now there's that word, straight loan. And anytime you see that, it's interest only is 5.5%. Annual interest rate is 364.72. What is the loan amount? Now there's something really key here that you have to see. The monthly interest on a straight loan with 5.5% annual interest rate is 364.72. 364.72 is the monthly interest. So you've got to first of all, take 364.72 and multiply it times 12. Because we have annual interest and we can't go mixing monthly and annual numbers. So 364, the monthly, remember that's the monthly interest is 364.72 times 12 gives us This is your annual interest. Remember, this is a, this is a straight loan. So they want to know what is the loan amount? So at this point, we just work a T problem. Try to find myself. Let's see, I'll just do this here. So we work a T problem. That's not going to work. I've run out of space. Let me do this here. So you've got this, 364 times 12. It always happened to me as a kid too. I'd be writing my name and I do want to, I'd start out like this. And then I'd get real small when I got down to the end. Hey, I'm just trying to have fun with you tonight. It's late, right? Okay, so I'm going to do another T problem. Man, I put my top, let me try that one more time. I'll get it right this time. There we go. I'm using an iPad and there's only so much room I have with adjusting this here. So 364.72 cents times 12 gives me the annual interest. Now we're solving for the loan amount. So if we put total, part, percent, do we know the annual interest? Yes, it's 5.5%. Move our decimal over two places, be .055. Now will the, what is the loan amount? Will the loan amount be bigger or smaller than the annual interest? It's bigger. So that's what we're solving for. So we just plug that interest. And remember, we had to take, we had to take this number times 12. And that gave us 4,0376.64. That's the number we're going to put right up here. Okay, so 4,0376.64 goes on top. And what's our math tell us to do? Divide. And this goes in your calculator first. Press the divide button second and hit .055 equals. And the answer is 79,575.27. That's the answer right there. Okay, one more. Okay, one more and we will. A broker shares evenly 7% commission with a cooperating broker. The selling broker's salesperson receives 70% of the selling broker's split. Salesperson receives $6,250. What was the sales price of the property? Hmm, interesting. Well, the first thing we need to know is a salesperson receives $6,250. And we also have that they receive 70% of their broker's split. So if I work a T problem, my first T problem, do I know where the percentage goes? Yes, 0.70, remember a percent's down here. Now, total or part? Hmm. Do I know what the salesperson received? What am I trying to find out? The total broker's part. So I'm solving for the larger number. So I'm going to put the smaller number, which is 6,250. My math tells me to divide, right? 6,250 first in the calculator, divide button second, 0.70 third. And that will give me the equal sign. And that will give me That's, this is what the broker received, right? The selling broker's side, which is also what? They shared it evenly, which is also 3.5%. Right? So all we need to do now is take this, because they shared it equally, and multiply it times two to get the total commission. So the total commission is 17,857.14. That's the total commission. Remember, once we, once we knew what the agent received and their split, we were able to figure out what their broker received. Well, since they were sharing it evenly, all we had to do is multiply times two to find out the total commission. Now, we just work one more T problem, don't we? How much was, let's erase some of this here. So we can see. So in this example, how much was, so we're solving for what? The sales price of the property. So if we label this total, part, and percent, we're solving for the larger number, the sales price. And we know that 17,857.14 is 7% of this number right here, because that's what our commission was, right? Or that's what the total commission is. So we can put the 17,857.14 on top. That's the commission. And if we divide it by, we move our decimal over, 0.07, what does our math tell us to do? Divide. Put this in your calculator first. Hit the divide button second. Put in 0.07 third. Hit your equal sign and you get 255,102. Now, that's your answer, so it's answer D. You can also go in the back door on this. And when I say go in the back door, I mean, you could literally take each one of these choices times 7%, divide by two, times 70%. And at some point, you're going to hit $6,250. Does that make sense? It's a very long and tedious process. But if you look at this, sometimes I look at a math problem and I know how to go in the back door by throwing each possible answer into my calculator and working it backwards. But either way, it's okay. Just try to make sure you, you get, you get these where you can answer those. So I want to just, uh... So I think that is plenty for tonight. Um, I'm working on all of these. You will have a math, um, you will have a math explanation, video explanation on everything, okay? I want you to know that. And I'm really working hard in order to get that accomplished. Uh, I do want to show you, oops, I meant to... I do want to show you a couple of things that we're working on here. Very quickly and then we'll wrap up here. So I'm going to just go in here as a, um, as a learner view. And I want to go, I have some of these that we'll see where we can go in here. So, um, I did, I wanted to show you this. I've changed some things around and I, I've marked people complete. I sent out a video. One thing I want you to make sure that you always go into is the notice board. Because, um, this is how I can communicate to you. So if you can remember, try to go into the notice board here. See, I gave this three days ago about I was making a major upgrade to the course. And what I did was, I, I actually broke the Missouri law into smaller modules. If, the reason I did this was twofold. First of all, I added a lot more audio explanation to the Missouri license law. Second, I added a few things that were in my material, but I wasn't stressing and they were asking questions about. So I feel like I have the Missouri law really tightened down now. And then I'm giving you these new state questions at the end. There's like 159 questions and you get feedback on every question, okay? And you will have some of these questions we went over tonight. You will have, um, video explanations on every one. I just think it's very important. These are very good. You also have these new exam questions. Now, don't pay attention to my score because I purposely miss questions just so I can make certain that everything's functioning correctly. But I broke these up. I do plan this week or next to make chapter 15 into about four modules, okay? So we'll make those chapter 15, A, B, C, D, and E, because that's a pretty long chapter. And I may break appraisal up into two chapters. I'm just trying to keep these in bite-sized chunks so that if you go in in the evening, you can take a course and be done, you know, and everything's done. Now, you'll notice I took the review modules out of here. I think they were confusing more people than helping them. But if you go to this home button up here in the top left corner, and I don't know if I added this to my, in fact, I know I didn't. So let me switch to admin and let me add this, just so you can see it. This is very important, so I just want to make sure that. So let me go to courses. And because I'm the administrator, I have a ton of courses in here and I want to assign this course right here to me. Okay, so now I'm going to come back over here to the learner view. And again, if you go up here to the home button in the top left corner, for some reason, if you go to course library, it doesn't show you. And if you click view all, I don't know, it's weird. And I've got to talk to the people about that. But if you come up here to the home button, you'll see all your courses here. Now, I just added the, here it is, review module. Looks like this. Review module for 48-hour course. This, these are all the review modules. And you, these can be taken in any order you want. And they're optional. Now, I do not encourage you, if you're, if you're in chapter 1 through 4, you know, you don't need to go into chapter 16. It's just going to confuse you, okay? But anytime you want to review, you can go into any of these and, and review these modules. So, uh, all your review modules are over here in, in this called the Missouri 48-hour course review modules. If you don't have that, let me know. Um, so anyway, I, um, wanted to point that out and I want to say thank you. I appreciate you being on here so long. You know, it's, I hope this was helpful for you. And I, I want you to know that I'm here to help you pass the test. If you need, if you have questions or need help, please feel free to reach out to me. But, uh, thank you and just keep studying hard. So I will talk to you later. Have a great evening. Good night.